We're gonna call the meeting to order. Do we, is Mark not gonna be able to make it?
I have not heard from Mark.
Okay, so we're gonna kinda expect Mark to come in. So, we have adoption of agenda, as I see we have some additional items on the agenda.
You have some additions also if you would, on consent agenda one. Miscommunication between Max and I, we already approved to scratch that out. You'll be approving those positions too, the two coaching positions.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
So just line item out.
Okay, any other corrections on that?
Nope, I think that's it.
I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda. Second, we have a second by Lou. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post say no. Okay, then we will move to approve and correct minutes from October fourteenth, two thousand fourteen regular meeting. I'm sure everybody had a chance to pre-get those. I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes.
Second.
Second by Deb. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Post say no. Okay, financial reports. It probably wouldn't be the worst to have Mark here. Do we have any? So can, we have approved to adjust this a little bit and give Mark a little time to get here and maybe move on.
Yeah, you could certainly bypass this until Mark gets here so he could verify.
Okay, so we will hold financial reports. Well, the financial reports we probably could do, the approved bills are really what we have to have him for.
That's why you checked.
Because none of us are looking at that stuff. So, everybody can take a look at the financial reports. Any comments?
The only thing I would add on the expenditure report, you wrote this on page one, there's a minus thirteen thousand sixteen. We're not over budget to buy that. Those are curriculum dollars that we've spent, that we just haven't transferred to dollars. On page, last page then, I think I've talked about that before, the minus two thousand seven hundred thirty-two. When we bought our new vans, it did increase our insurance, but we're also getting some insurance back. So it's, there is more, there will be a deficit there. We'll work out of our reserve fund for that, but it won't be as much as the two thousand seven hundred thirty-two as we're getting some dollars back to when we changed our policy to increase, increase the existing vans or change the existing vans. And then the two thousand five hundred ninety-seven. Again, we believe that that's, was just an addition for the insurance, those two items. Uh, let me, let me take that. The two thousand five hundred ninety-four is the insurance, the two thousand seven hundred thirty-two is workers' comp. So, that was just an adjustment for that, sorry about that. And that won't be as much because we're getting the credit back from workers' comp on that, but it hasn't been added yet.
So, and the credits coming back from workers' comp on our audit?
Yes.
And it looked pretty good, does it get better for us?
Uh, we're about where I said, we're better than what I thought we would be. Um, the audit will be in probably the first meeting in November, but we're probably sitting at two sixty-seven around there right now. And again, with the consideration that we lost a number of students last year, for us to be actually adding money to our reserve fund is a good thing.
I like the motion approved. I have a motion from David to approve the financial reports.
Second.
I have a second by Deb. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post say no. Okay, that'll take care of the financial reports. Now, number seven, audit approval of bills. If it's okay with everybody, we'll just hold that off till Mark gets here. Okay, so now that we're on a consent, consent agenda. Review and consider approval of the following winter sports assignments, with the understanding that these assignments may be adjusted due to participation numbers. A bunch of coaching positions. We have a motion by Deb to approve the consent agenda. And we have a second, second by Lou. Any further discussion?
Uh, I would just, to note that there are two new coaches on there. Junior high girls coach, Brad Swedland is new, and the junior high boys coach is Riley Deckard, who's also new.
Just a reminder, if you can speak into your mic or something, so let me hear better.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say no. Passed. Okay. Then we are now on business, and in the business area, we have public comment at every business item. So, how we'll handle this, we have a whole series of them. If there's any public comment, if you raise your hand, if there's a comment that comes to your mind, or whatever, and then we will just flow right through this unless somebody has a comment. I will try and remember every single time to make sure we do that. First, number one is review and consider approval to change November eleventh school board meeting because it falls on Veterans Day.
Yeah, you know what, the addendum does speak to this a little bit, because it's on Veterans Day, I rotated through it. Did not catch that, apologize to the board for that, but which means that we need to meet either that Monday, Tuesday, or Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday of that week. Uh, we do have to meet that week because we need to canvas our lecture results. So it's not that we can even just cancel the meeting.
Okay, do we have any suggestions from the board? Does Monday work?
Monday's the best for my schedule.
Monday's the only day that doesn't work for me.
That doesn't work, so we have two that it doesn't work. Um, Wednesday?
Yeah, fine with me.
David?
I haven't checked, but maybe, yeah, I mean, if we're sure we all, something.
Okay, Calla, would work for you? Okay, let, we'll move it to Wednesday. So it'd be the twelfth.
And time?
Um, I would think the same time.
Six thirty.
Six thirty.
So I'd say maybe make a motion.
So we have a motion to do that?
Make a motion and we make it six thirty. I'm going to the twelfth.
Motion by Lou, seconded by Cheryl. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Post say no. Okay, uh, number two, review and consider approval of request by Pendleton Motor Transfers for not using eight-way light system and stop sign at two eight five five seven State Highway fifty-five bus stop.
I'm gonna invite Mike Don to talk a little bit about that.
Good evening. Um, on this, this stop, actually, I submitted this letter to Bob to get on his agenda. As soon as I found out the family moved into this stop, but I'm actually gonna ask to dismiss this agenda item because I'm gonna look at doing this stop a different way. Um, so it was submitted for board approval to stop as not using the eight-way stop system, and so I would like to go forward with it using the eight-way stop system on this. But in the, in the past, we haven't used the eight-way sign, and so that's why I submitted it as soon as I found out a family moving to this address. So, actually.
You're saying you do wanna use the eight-way at this stop?
Correct.
That's just your routine, stop, staples, right?
Yes, correct, yep, yep. Yeah, in the past, we haven't, and then that has to be submitted for board approval, but we're gonna go ahead and try it a different way. Um, since the family moved in there, I had an opportunity to speak to the state patrol about the stop, and so we're gonna try to put the lights and sign.
Is this, obviously a safety issue of why?
Correct, yep, that was the concern was, was for the safety of the students, of how do they get the safest stop? It's because there's a bypass lane at that, at that spot. It's across from M&amp;M Lambert, across from Hilltop, and so there's bypass lanes. And, uh, so the bus had in the past pulled off onto that bypass lane and used the four-way clatters. And, uh, so then that needed board approval for that to happen. And so now, we're gonna go ahead and try it with the stop sign, and see how that works.
Yeah, it is being changed because he has already, he's talked to the highway patrol about this, and at least it's, we wanna do it the safest way.
Yep.
It just, you know where I'm at, at the end of that bypass lane, so I'm just curious as to why it was okay for so many years, and now all of a sudden it's not. I, I think it's good that they're not doing it because when I ran a daycare out there, we actually had vehicle go between the bus and the, and the Indian farm driveway, even with the bypass lanes. I was just curious what changed the state patrols? Or is this the first time you guys have talked to the state patrol?
Um, about that particular stop, yeah. Uh, that's the first time I've talked to them about that particular stop. We're always just looking at different ways, at different stops, and they've got different, um, they've got different criteria for what works for, for turn lanes, bypass lanes, shoulders, and so with this one being a bypass lane, they thought that using the, the stop sign would be the best.
So if we're withdrawing this motion, Bob, we would make a motion to not approve the request by Pendleton Motor?
Correct.
So I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Second by Cheryl. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post say no. Thank you very much, sorry. Okay, um, again, public comment is wide open, so raise your hand or whatever, because we kinda flow relatively quickly, so. Um, review and consider approval of teacher sharing agreement for Natalie Yudz, agricultural instructor with Recorey Schools for the two thousand fourteen fifteen school year.
This is something, I think this is our sixth year that we've been sharing, I would just recommend approval. I think it's a good deal for both, on Recorey and us at this point. I will tell the board that for next year, we're going to review that, make sure it continues to be the best deal for both schools.
So.
Okay, I have a motion by Deb.
Second.
I have a second by Cheryl. Any further discussion?
I think we do have a great person working in chat being in the room right now, but I tell her that anyway, that's so far, it's worked out really well.
It, it has, but as all our other programs are, we wanna review it to make sure that it's best for both schools.
Yep.
But I would, I would agree with the great program.
Okay, um, all in favor say aye? Or, excuse me, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Post say no. Okay, next one is review and consider approval of concurrent enrollment program agreement between Fodellak College and the Pendleton Area Schools for two thousand fourteen fifteen school year.
Uh, the information is, is pretty much in the addendum. It's, uh, the district enters a concurrent enrollment agreement at the Fodellak. The cost is fifty hundred for each course offered, but it's a course that's offered, it's five dollars per credit per student. It allows us to keep our state aid, it's, this is a good way for us to do it.
Okay. I have a motion by Calla.
Second.
And I have a second by David. Any further discussion? From the public. Um, all in favor say aye? Aye. Post say no. Passed. Number five, review and consider reapproval of the seven forty, of District seven forty-one teacher performance improvement program and approved teacher development and evaluation joint agreement between the Education, Minnesota Pendleton Area, and District seven forty-one.
Yeah, there's been a group of administrators, teachers, Deb is also part of that, that committee. Um, we really started with the old teacher performance and built into it the new requirements by state law. So after quite a few meetings, uh, this is a performance improvement program that was put in place by, in agreement by both the teachers and administrators. We do believe that this is a, is a great way for us to start. We'll, we'll be reviewing this every year, um, but at least for now, uh, we do need to have an agreement. If we don't agree to what we put together, then you have to go to the state model, um, which I don't believe would be good for anybody. It's a little cumbersome, at least in my opinion. So, after a lot of meetings, we put this together, it's been gone over with Deb, um, but we would certainly recommend both, I think I'm part of the teachers' union administration, that we do approve this. Um, we can certainly go through all the changes if the board would like, but it was really built off of the old model, just the new mandates were put in place.
And it wasn't just a lot of meetings, the committee, many tiny changes came up, like with the performance package and stuff. They were well discussed, not only at the meetings just on this, but at staff development meetings, at teacher meetings, at staffings after school. I mean, there was a lot of time put in. Did most of the teachers get their input?
The, the teachers in the end had to vote on this. So, you know, I, when teachers work in a group, they certainly send things out, get input, was changed, and certainly the, the staff, to my understanding, had an opportunity to make any changes that needed to, or that, they at least had a discussion. I can't say everything was changed because you won't, not everybody will agree with everything. Uh, but we think this is a good plan. The, the purpose of this plan is to improve instruction. That's what the purpose is, is to help our teachers get better, even our good teachers to get even better. Um, and we've got a great group of teachers, we believe that this plan will help our teachers across the board improve.
And who was on the admin side of that?
Um, the principals, myself, and then Deb is also a board member representing. So we, we were there when this was developed. This, this is a cooperative agreement. It's not, one side did not have anybody's side, again, it was built off the old one.
Even with the list that we're actually on the committee, a lot of times, other people came in and did, had input to it. I mean, one, like a closed meeting, just that group, so. I think the teachers were, they didn't get their voice heard, it's because they didn't speak up best.
Well, it sounds like a good teamwork approach, and teamwork will make it work. Some of our sports teams have shown some of that.
So we're doing two things with this motion. We're approving the improvement program itself, and also then approving the teacher's development and evaluation joint agreement. This is just an agreement between us that we need to kind of have in place for the state to understand that it was a joint agreement, that it wasn't just the administration saying we're going to do this, that was never the purpose of the law. It was intended to either use the state model, or to come up with a program in cooperation with both the teachers and administration.
Okay, I have a motion by Deb.
Second.
I have a second by Cheryl. Any further discussion? Nothing from the public. All in favor say aye. Aye. Post say no.
This will be coming back to the board every year as any new program, and presumably we'll be adjusting it as we need.
Good. Um, review and consider approval to membership to schools of equity and education.
Uh, we, I'm not sure how many years, I didn't go back and check to see how many years we've belonged to this organization. I do believe that this organization is a great organization for our district to belong to, and I would certainly recommend that we continue that partnership.
Personally, I think that that is extremely important for everything that we're struggling with out in our small schools here, because the metro schools get over the line share that they get down there, and according to the state law, as far as education is concerned, and the statutes, that there's supposed to be equal educational opportunities in the state of Minnesota for every student, and the lines shared down in the metro, and we have to, we have to change that.
And this group really does, and there's someone down there from this group. Every time there's a meeting anywhere that discusses schools and, schools and or schools and equity, there will be somebody there representing us with their voice. And they do try to get a lot of people from the public to come down, they have tours, I mean, they'll, I think it's very, it's very worthwhile.
Yeah, this group had quite a good say about building that do it and hold piece. Um, it didn't help us a whole lot, but it did help a number of other districts that were not in our same position, that did not, weren't able to get, um, a referendum passed in, in a lot of ways, so I, I believe it's been a really good solid organization for us.
I would make the motion that we, uh, continue membership of this organization.
Second.
We have a motion from Deb, um, and a second from Cheryl. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye? Aye. Post say no. Okay, then we're back to personnel number one. Review and consider approval of the seniority list for the certified staff.
Uh, this is an annual piece that we go through. Um, as the addendum says, each year, we approve CRA list for certified staff. Custodians, maintenance, food service, paraprofessionals have a date of service document. All groups have twenty days to review the list and make any changes. All groups have had the required time to review, and we're certainly gonna recommend that we approve each of them.
I'll, I'll make the motion, but I also wanna ask why, is there a reason we can't put that on the consent agenda?
Not to my knowledge, we could probably put that on the consent agenda and do it.
It pretty much is in the annual things, that's just a matter of saying that we've gone through it and it's up to date.
Yeah, as long as we've made the, the time requirements, you know, it is something that we do need to do, we do need to approve these.
Okay, so, we so moved on number one, we have four that are virtually identical, so because they're listed four times, we should do them four. Okay, review and consider approval of the seniority list for certified staff. We have a motion from Deb, right? Second from?
Second Lou.
Calla.
Calla. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye? Aye. Aye. Post say no. Number two, review and consider approval of the seniority list for the custodial staff.
So.
I have a motion from Cheryl.
Second.
A second from Lou. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye? Aye. Post say no. Review and consider approval of the seniority list for the maintenance staff.
So.
I have a motion from Cheryl.
Second.
A second from Deb. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye? Aye. Post say no. Review and consider approval of the seniority list for the food service staff. I have a motion from Lou.
Second.
A second from Calla. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye? Aye. Post say no. Review and consider approval of date of service document for the paraprofessionals.
So.
I have a motion from Deb.
Second.
A second from Cheryl. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye? Aye. Post say no. Okay, number six, review and consider approval to hire Bobby Joe Knapp. Pronounce that one for me, Deb. Is that correct?
Yeah, I'm not sure.
I'm guessing that's, I can't, can't say it for. I hope that's funny that she's listening, or if Bobby Joe's listening, I apologize. Um, as a special education, long-term teacher sub for the, a staff member of maternity leave effective approximately November fourth, two thousand fourteen, to December twenty-third, two thousand fourteen. I have a motion from Deb. A second from Calla. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Yeah, just to be aware, I believe this one, it will, has, it's a special ed piece, so we are, we've already turned in for a variance. We expect to get that because really it was the only candidate we had. So even if we can't get the variance, that has an impact on what we collect back from special ed, but either way, we have to, and she was the only candidate. But we are going for a variance for this particular long call, so.
Okay, all in favor say aye? Aye. Post say no. Passed. Review and consider approval to hire Nicole, um, Pykel, food service worker for four point five hours per day effective October twenty-ninth, two thousand fourteen.
Both these food services are just replacing people who have.
The down home.
Yeah. So there are not additions.
So.
I have a motion from Cheryl.
Second.
A second from Calla. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye? Aye. Post say no. Review and consider approval to hire Mary Ann Hamish, food service worker for three hours per day effective October twenty-ninth, two thou, twenty-ninth, two thousand fourteen.
So.
A motion from Lou.
Second.
A second from Deb. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye? Aye. Post say no. Okay. Uh, we are right now, then, at informational reports, so we're, David, I guess you are on.
Yeah, we had a transportation meeting, Tuesday, I think it was last Tuesday, and it was interesting. We hired consultant Chuck Corliss as his name. In other areas of school, there's a lot of data available, you know, to compare salaries of administrators, teachers, and so on. We've never really had the data comparing us to other districts with transportation. This guy is very knowledgeable in the field, and, uh, he came up with very good numbers from a number of very similar districts to us, and found that we're, we're a little high in some areas and a little low in other areas, so we're gonna try to modernize the contract a little bit, bring out some special education, transportation, general transportation, make it down, but we're willing to, you know, see where that lays this and get us in line with, uh, you know, the prevailing contracts out there. So this guy, I think, was, was very informational and, I don't even know, paid him, but it was worth, uh.
Is he gonna?
It will depend on how much time he puts in with us.
Is he gonna be there for, during the negotiation, trying to?
Right now, we, we, we have a couple offers that have gone back and forth, so we're waiting for him to kind of crunch a few numbers for us before we respond.
He really impressed me. He really did.
No.
Yes, it was very good.
Oh, okay.
So we're, it's just kinda on hold until we take a look at where we're at.
Okay, uh, number two, administrative report. Mr. Hewlett.
I have a call from a board member who's missing, so maybe after I get done with my report, I'll make a quick call to see it, so for him to verify that, take a look at it. Uh, just a few things, um, we're still looking at the, the program to put in for using credit cards for lunch. We're just about there. We did some tests, we ran into some glitches, we fixed the glitches. Uh, I think we're just about ready to notify the parents that the program will start to open up, so we're just about there now. Uh, just be aware, I have a football playoff game at Morris Big Cat Stadium on Friday at seven o'clock. Uh, should be a great game, I think, section finals, I think, if I'm not mistaken. Um, volleyball had a great season, they were teamless co-champs for the West Central Conference, the salt division of that did a great job. We had a couple cross-country runners who made all-conference honors. Uh, parents should be aware that we have an early release day on this Friday. Uh, the end of the first quarter is this Friday, hard to believe, one quarter done this Friday. Um, and that it's a quarter break on November third, so November, November third does not have school that day. There are no schools for students. Uh, we have parent-teacher conferences coming up on November twenty-fifth from four fifteen to eight forty-five, and November twenty-sixth from eight to three forty-five. Uh, community, uh, let's see, uh, we're going to have a potato day on November twenty-fifth at three o'clock. Uh, it's a great event, I would encourage the board members, either at the high school or at the elementary school, uh, there'll be potatoes there, the staff brings fixings, it's kind of between conferences, so it's at for supper, and it's a great deal. So, I'd encourage the board, if you can attend, to show up and visit with the staff and have a potato with them. Um, then just as a reminder to the community, uh, there are four board seats up for election this year. In addition, um, the district has two questions on the bell. Uh, I want the community to make sure that they take the time to get their questions answered, so that they're informed voters before they go out on Tuesday, November fourth. Information concerning the two questions can be called at, um, on the website at www.painesvilleschools.com. Um, just make sure you get out and vote on November fourth. That's my report. Uh, if it's, with, the board will give you a second, I will try to get a hold of Mr. David.
I think that's all.
Well, we have a lot of interesting stuff coming up.
Hey, Mark.
Election tomorrow, or not tomorrow, but, you know, next week, so.
Um, did you take a look at the bills and should verify those? Got it. Okay, um, so that sounds good, we're just about done with the board meeting, I'll, I'll inform the, the board here. Okay, thanks. Um, we kind of have a little bit of a dilemma here. Mark did not get to the bills for this time. Uh, what I would suggest to the, to the board, because we still have to pay our bills, we can't just ignore them, is that if the board, um, approves them, I think it would be under the recommendation that, um, the bills are reviewed first by Mark, and any bill that he sees an issue would be pulled from the packet before we, we do it, and we would not release the bills until after Mark has had a chance to review them. Because I would hate to hold up, we do need to pay some bills, and I would hate to hold. Because I would hate to hold up, we do need to pay some bills, and I would hate to hold that for two weeks.
I think that's a like-good plan, I think I would move that we do it. Do it that way, what he said.
We have a motion by Cheryl.
I'll second it.
And we have a second by Deb. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose say no. And the last thing we have, is there any other sharing amongst board members or administration? We've got an exciting election coming. We have lots of stuff that we've done. I do have to say, I think as a board and our administrator did a very nice job representing and answering questions of the public, and the public needs to understand that his phone is always available along with us if they would have questions. I think Bob stated it best that we need to make sure everybody's informed about what we're deciding on, and I think he did a good job.
The community gets to make the decision.
So, do we have a motion to adjourn? We have a motion by Lou? Do we have a second somewhere? I have a second. We have a second by David. All in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose say no.